All right. Thank you all very much, and welcome to the September 16th regular meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Turn it over to our clerk, Melissa Manriquez, for a roll call to establish quorum.
Supervisor Allen.
Here.
Supervisor Kano.
Here.
Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz.
Chair Scott.
Here.
Let the record show Supervisor Heinz is not present. All other board members are present.
Thank you, Ms. Manriquez. We're now going to call on Scott Nemeth. Mr. Nemeth is an administrative specialist with the Health Department, and Mr. Nemeth will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Sir.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott, and to the board, versus the supervisors, and to everyone in attendance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Nemeth, thank you. Anything that you wanted to share with us about some of your current work at the Health Department?
Well, we've been busy. We got through COVID, and we have a lot of projects that we're working on. And I've been with Pima County for 28-plus years.
Wow.
So this has been a very honor for me. And Dr. Collins has been a very great Health Department Director.
Well, thank you for 20-
And so has a senior leadership in all the employees.
Thank you for 28 years of service to the county. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. You all have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nemeth. Now we'll call on Joanna Dynan. Ms. Dynan is a Safety Loss Prevention Officer with the Pima County Regional Wastewater Reclamation Department, and she will read the land acknowledgement statement.
Good morning, all. On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of the Tahona-OTM Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Pasquayaki Tribe within Pima County. Consequent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive toward building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations.
Ms. Dynan, thank you so much. And anything you want to share about your work in the Wastewater Department?
Well, I do the safety training and new employee training, so we're just trying to keep everybody safe out there.
All right.
And keep the wastewater moving. But also, I work on the ECAP Committee, which is the committee where employees can donate to charities throughout the country. We're going to have our kickoff this Friday. Ms. Leshar is always there. She's a big supporter of it. Last year, we raised a quarter of a million dollars for charities in Pima County. So very proud of that work.
Thanks for your hard work and also for your commitment to our community.
Thank you.
We now have pause for pause, and we have an in-person presentation today, and you're all going to be happy about that here in a second.
Good morning, everyone. So my name is Katie Hutchinson. I am the Animal Placement Manager at PAC, and I am joined today with Velcro. Velcro is a two-month-old, very curious little kitten who is at PAC with his three siblings, ready to be adopted. We wanted to just give a shout out and a thank you to our whole community. We had a very successful adoption event this weekend, and we're able to get our census down below 500, which is a big milestone for us. But we still have lots of animals like Velcro ready to be adopted. And if you're not ready for adoption, we always have foster, and then we're gearing up for our busy fall season, and would love to get some extra volunteers. So if you can volunteer, even just for a couple hours, we have various programs for everyone in our community to come down and get your smiles for the day by spending time with some awesome pets like Velcro and our usually 500 dogs and other 200 cats at PAC.
I was going to ask how Velcro got their names, but then I was walking.
You can see, yep, I was walking around, and he just curls right up and purrs. I think he was a big fan of Mrs. Leshar there.
Oh.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go back to the clerk now for Agenda Adjustments, which is item five on our agenda.
On the regular agenda, page five, item 25, this is a contract under detainee and crisis systems with NAF Care. This item will be heard at a time cern of 11:00 a.m. On page eight, item 40, under Grants, it's with Community and Workforce Development, Arizona Department of Economic Security, the Rapid Response Project. There's a correction to the grant amount. It should read $195,997. On page 10, item 52, under Development Services, this is a hearing comprehensive plan amendment, P23CA00001, the Pima County 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update, Pima Prosperous. The county administrator requests this item be continued to the Board of Supervisors meeting of October 14th. And on the addendum agenda, page one, items two and three, they are both executive sessions. These items will be heard at a time cern of 12:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manriquez. I now want to call on Supervisor Christie, who had asked for a point of personal privilege, and I believe Supervisor Kano would like one as well. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. By now, we have all heard, seen, and articulated the horrific events surrounding the political murder of Charlie Kirk. At this point, for me to say anything more would be superfluous and without much additional meaning or impact. However, the overarching connecting thread and issue is a focus, a focus on speech and speaking, freedom of speech, and freedom of expression. The entire range has been covered about the rights of free speech, including hate speech, free speech, threatening speech, and words, many spoken words, as words do matter, as does the right to speak, which Charlie Kirk was exercising and died. So I ask for this, Mr. Chair. In honor of the memory of Charlie Kirk, a good and decent man and husband, a father, a patriotic American, who lived and died for calling for all to speak and to be free to speak, right now, instead of more speaking, let's share a moment of silence, a moment of not speaking, in honor of the life of Charlie Kirk and for the future of our country.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Supervisor Christie. Supervisor Kano.
Thank you, Chair Scott. Last Friday marked 150 days since I was appointed to this board. From day one, my team and I set out an ambitious goal to meet with every county department, visit our facilities, and build strong relationships with our community partners. I am so proud to share that we have done just that. In those 150 days, the District Five Office has supported over 250 neighbors, met with more than 40 community partners, attended 25 public events, and 10 neighborhood associations, and visited every county department to learn about their work firsthand. Along the way, I've shared heartfelt moments from family storytime with our librarians at the Valencia Library, getting a flu shot at the Teresa Lee Clinic while visiting, meeting with the dedicated Fleet Services staff who keep us safe every day. And the overarching message, Chair Scott, is that we are 7,000 employees strong in Pima County, and without the tireless work of our county staff, this region of more than 1 million residents would be vastly different. I extend my gratitude to our county administrator and her dedicated team over the last 150 days, to my colleagues, and of course, to the District Five family, Monserrat, Julie, and Jocelyn. I am so proud to be on your team. This is just the beginning, and I'm honored to serve. Thank you for this point of personal privilege, Chair Scott.
Thank you, Supervisor Kano. And just to piggyback on Supervisor Christie's comments, back in June, we had a moment of silence when the former Speaker of the Minnesota House and her husband were assassinated in their home. And I remember the first thought that I had was that their children had lost both their parents the day before Father's Day. The first thought I had when I heard about the murder of Mr. Kirk was that he was the same age that I was when my twins were born, and that two more children will go through the rest of their lives without a father. And I think it's that common humanity that Supervisor Christie was speaking to in his remarks, and that all of us need to latch on to as we're trying to move forward from this horrible moment. So thank you, but thank you both. And Supervisor Kano, thank you for sharing your anniversary date with us and for honoring your staff.
I don't know that anybody else is counting, Chair Scott, but us, but we are.
Well, I also had a point of personal privilege, but it's on a, it's about something that we've all talked about here, but it is connected with a tradition that I have carried on that was started by Chair Bronson, carried on by Chair Guralva, and that is the fact that every month I meet with the mayor of the city of Tucson to talk about matters of concern to both the city and the county. And one of the things that Mayor Romero and I have done is we have convened several meetings of our justice system partners, people from the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, the courts, the city prosecutor's office, and the county attorney's office to talk about how we can best assist with some of the justice system issues that we see in our community. And one of the things that has been brought up many times are the successes of the county's Transition Center. And those successes, my colleagues will be pleased to know, are especially attested to by our law enforcement representatives, people who are seeing folks that they took to jail have positive experiences in the Transition Center. So I would like to ask, by way of direction, for the county administrator to get back to the Board of Supervisors on a plan to make the Transition Center be open seven days a week, with a long-term goal of it being open 24/7. I understand from talking with the county administrator that seven days is a good short-term goal. We discussed this yesterday in our meeting with Mayor Romero and the city manager. And the city manager is understanding that part of the recommendation that we will get from the county administrator will also include a continuation of the staffing partnership that we've had with the city, with the Transition Center. And then also would like a report, because the two things are connected, on how we're doing with warrant resolution. So thank you very much to my colleagues for hearing that point of personal privilege and for the follow-up from county administration. So we have several proclamations to present before we get started with the rest of our agenda. And the first is a presentation of a proclamation to Charlie Buchanan, CEO, Carmen Noriega, Director of Marketing and Communications, Gina Hansen, Director of Volunteer Resources, and Jennifer Brown, Volunteer Coordinator, Habitat for Humanity Tucson, proclaiming the day of Monday, October 6, 2025, to be World Habitat Day in Pima County. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 4-0, and Supervisor Allen will be making the presentation.
So I had the pleasure of recently touring Habitat's Chuck Center, which is a 15,000-square-foot facility that features modular building technology. So there, they can create 11 different styles of prefabricated panels. So that means that affordable housing can go up more quickly, efficiently, and for less expense. So now Habitat can produce enough panels in one year to build almost 100 homes. That is an 800% increase, annual increase. It also increases volunteer capacity at Habitat by 30%. Habitat also offers a free 16-week micro-credentially program to learn basic construction skills. And this addresses both a housing crisis as well as a shortage of skilled labor. So it is my great pleasure to present this proclamation to an incredible community organization. So whereas Habitat for Humanity celebrated its 45th anniversary on April 23, 2025, making over four decades of dedicated service to Pima County by providing safe, affordable housing to families in need. And whereas, since its founding in 1980, Habitat for Humanity Tucson has built and repaired homes for thousands of individuals and families, fostering stability, hope, and opportunity for countless residents of southern Arizona. And whereas Habitat for Humanity Tucson has brought together volunteers, donors, community partners, to create sustainable solutions to the housing crisis, embodying the spirit of collaboration and compassion that defines our community. And whereas, through its programs and initiatives, Habitat for Humanity Tucson has strengthened neighborhoods, empowered families, and contributed to the economic and social vitality of our region. And whereas World Habitat Day, observed annually on the first Monday of October, serves as a reminder of the fundamental right to safe and decent shelter, and Habitat for Humanity Tucson's 45 years of service exemplify this mission in action. And whereas Habitat for Humanity Tucson's commitment to, quote, "hammers hearts and homes" has not only provided shelter, but also strengthened the social and economic fabric of our community, aligning with the universal goals of World Habitat Day. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims Monday, October 6, 2025, to be World Habitat Day in Pima County, and encourages all citizens to join in celebrating these milestones by supporting Habitat for Humanity Tucson's efforts to build homes, communities, and hope today and for the rest of the next 45 years. Passed and adopted this 16th day of September, 2025. Thank you.
Well, thank you Supervisor Allen, Chair Scott, fellow supervisors on the Pima County Board. Just couldn't say much more better than that. We're incredibly honored for the recognition of our work for 45 years. We're proud to have delivered over 500 homes here in southern Arizona, and we're really excited to build a bright future. It's, we're proud of what we've achieved at Habitat, but it's really a reflection of the generosity of our community, the donors, the volunteers, and partners in our community that help us chase our vision of a world where everyone has a place to live. And thank you for sharing in that belief. We have a rich history of Pima County standing shoulder to shoulder with Habitat Tucson, even going back to neighborhood stabilization funds, to new home construction, home repair, and our Chuck Center. You were a key partner in that. So you've been there every step of the way. We can't express our gratitude enough, and please know that your partnership is changing lives. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Allen. The next item is presentation of a proclamation to Peggy Gibson, proclaiming the week of September 17 through September 23, 2025, to be Constitution Week in Pima County. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 4-0, and Supervisor Christie will be presenting this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Gibson could not be with us today, so I'll simply read the proclamation.
Okay, very good, sir.
Whereas, the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas, September 17, 2025, marks the 238th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas, Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, this year proudly proclaimed by President Donald J. Trump, designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the week of September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week in Pima County, and asks our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian. protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Passed and adopted this 16th of September, 2025. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Christie. We'll now go to item eight on the regular agenda. This is presentation of a proclamation to Fernando Sanchez, Mexican head consul; Lee Wong Medina, Mexican consul adscrito; Alan Perez, Guatemalan consul; Alma Gallardo, executive director, Arizona bilingual; Raoul Aguirre, president and CEO of REA Media; Claudia Josso, president and CEO, Amistades Incorporated; and Rabaleas, CEO, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, all of whom I hope will excuse my horrible pronunciation, proclaiming September 15 through October 15, 2025, to be Hispanic Heritage Month. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Kano. And, I'm sorry, discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 4-0, and Supervisor Kano will be presenting this proclamation.
Good morning. It is a pleasure to welcome all of these incredible community leaders to the board hearing room. We'll have the opportunity for a few folks to make some brief remarks, but I'll go ahead and get started. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month in the United States began as Hispanic Heritage Week in 1968, then in 1988 became Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 to October 15, in honor of Miguel Hidalgo y Costillas' call to arms that launched the Mexican War of Independence. And whereas, the Hispanic heritage of southern Arizona dates back to the missions of Father Quino, who founded Mission San Javier del Bac in 1692. And whereas, descendants of those who lived in Tucson during its Spanish and Mexican periods, Hispanic and indigenous, carried forward the culture's traditions that are alive in the region today. Whereas Hispanics comprise about 1/3 of consumer spending in Tucson, 1/3 of small business owners, 2/5 of the overall population, and more than 1/3 of Pima County's workforce. And whereas Tucson welcomes international audiences for events year-round, such as the International Mariachi Conference, the Agave Heritage Festival, the Bloom Festival coming up next year, and Tucson Meet Yourself. And whereas Hispanic influences in Tucson's food traditions have played a role in UNESCO's 2015 designation of Tucson to its prestigious Creative Cities Network as a City of Gastronomy, now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims September 15 through October 15, 2025, to be Pima County Hispanic Heritage Month, and call upon everyone in Pima County to celebrate Hispanic heritage and recognize the extraordinary impacts of Hispanic peoples on our communities, our economy, our institutions, and our culture. Passed and adopted this 16th day of September, 2025. Congratulations. Now, I recognize that there are Latinos all over the world, and I am really grateful to have seen our community celebrate particularly over the last two days, Mexican Independence Day, which is today. I want to turn the mic over briefly to Fernando Adrian Sanchez Roldan, our Consul of Mexico and Tucson, where he works to strengthen the cultural, economic, and diplomatic ties between Mexico and southern Arizona. He had a great party hosted yesterday at the Linda Ronstadt Music Hall. The day before, Arizona bilingual welcomed thousands of folks as well to a festival that brought together community. And this is just another demonstration of our people coming together, and I want to pass it over to the consul. Welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Well, this is my first participation in one event of this, so I just want to say thanks to everyone. Today, we are very proud about our Independence Day, and, well, thanks for the invitation for being here, and thanks for the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. And to close this out, also want to ensure that we give an opportunity for Consul Perez of the Guatemalan consul to join us as well for some brief remarks. Thank you.
Morning, everyone. Thank you. I am so pleased to be here this morning, and to thank the Pima County Board of Supervisors for the recognition of the Hispanic Month here in the Pima County. We invite everybody to enjoy it as well, and as he said, we are come from a long, long Hispanic descendancy. And also, it's my first time being here, and I appreciate it. We appreciate it for everybody to be here and from this proclamation. Thank you again. Thank you.
All right. We'll take a quick photo, and of course, want to extend a big thanks to all of the community partners that are joining us today with this board. I'd invite all of them to speak, but I might get in trouble by administrator lecher, so
All right. Supervisor Kano, thank you very much for inviting all of us to join you. Item number nine on the agenda is presentation of a proclamation to Sandra Otero and Francis Aruñez, celebrating Los Haritos, Mexican food. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 4-0, and as you can see, Supervisor Kano will be presenting this proclamation.
Thank you, Chair Scott. As we continue the tradition of Latino business owners making a huge difference in Pima County, I am so proud to offer this proclamation to Francis and Tisandra. I'll read the proclamation and then have you hold on to it. Forty-five years in two days. Whereas, since opening its doors on September 18, 1980, Los Haritos Mexican Food has been more than a restaurant. It's been a home, gathering place, and living piece of cell site history. And whereas, founded by Francis and Pasqual Aruñez, Los Haritos has carried forward their vision of serving honest, homestyle Mexican cooking rooted in the recipes and traditions passed down through generations. And whereas, from menudo, made with love, to red chili, bifuritos, green corn tamales, and comforting family favorites, Los Haritos reminds us of mom's kitchen and nana's table, keeping Tucson connected to its cultural heart with every plate served. And whereas, for more than four decades, the Aruñez family has built a multi-generational legacy, welcoming Tucson families through their doors, and welcoming part of countless traditions, from Sunday breakfast after mass to holiday tamale preparations, anchoring community life on South 12th Avenue, right in the heart of District 5. And whereas, Los Haritos embodies resilience, pride, and community, showing us how a family business can become a landmark by staying true to its roots while passing its spirit on to the next generation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors proudly celebrates Los Haritos Mexican Food for their generations of flavor, family, and community in Tucson, and honors the Aruñez family and the entire Los Haritos team for more than four decades of hospitality, consistency, and love, a true Tucson treasure. Passed and adopted this 16th day of September, 2025.
Well, thank you very much Supervisor Kano and the Board of Supervisors for this great honor. In behalf of our family and Los Haritos, we are truly grateful. For generations, our restaurant has been about family, culture, and community. This recognition belongs to everyone who has been part of our journey. Thank you, Tucson, for embracing us, and we look forward to many, many more years. Thank you so much. Muchas gracias.
I have one more. Thank you, and as Supervisor Kano said, we're going to go to item number 10 on the agenda. Presentation of a proclamation to Sehilo Preciado and Delia Preciado, celebrating the 31st anniversary of Mariscos Chihuahua in Tucson. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 4-0, and Supervisor Kano will present this proclamation.
Thank you, colleagues, and I'd love to welcome as many of the Preciado family to join us as possible. I hope you guys are getting hungry by now. I certainly am. We talked about menudo and tamales and all of the above, huh? Want to really thank all of the Preciados for being here. You can come right behind me. Delia, Sehilo, Melissa, Gloria, Anthony, and Pedro Contreras. We are so, so excited to continue honoring another Tucson landmark. I'm thinking of some Camarones Culichis right now, so... Whereas, for over three decades, Mariscos Chihuahua has been a beloved culinary institution in Tucson, introducing generations of residents and visitors to the rich flavors of authentic Mexican-style seafood since opening its doors on July 12, 1994, under the care and vision of the Preciado family. And whereas, originally founded in Nogales, Mexico in 1971, Mariscos Chihuahua has grown into a Tucson landmark cherished for its community-rooted hospitality, family traditions, and cultural contributions to southern Arizona's vibrant food scene. And whereas, the restaurant is famed for signature dishes like its shrimp culichi, celebrated by the New York Times for its distinctive boblano cream sauce, and its civi chip, which has drawn lines of loyal customers at events such as Tucson Meet Yourself, selling over 500 pounds in a single day. And whereas, the Preciado family has built a multi-generational legacy of culinary excellence by maintaining consistency, sourcing quality ingredients, and forging strong ties with local vendors and communities. And whereas, through these 31 years in Tucson, Mariscos Chihuahua has embodied resilience, pride, and innovation, expanding its legacy through additional family-run locations while staying true to its Barrio Hollywood roots in District 5. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors recognizes and celebrates the 31st anniversary of Mariscos Chihuahua in Tucson for exemplary leadership in culinary tradition, community building, and family legacy, and honors the Preciado family and the entire Mariscos Chihuahua team for your 31 years of dedication, quality, and joyful service to Pima County and southern Arizona. Passed and adopted this 16th day of September, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for this recognition, and we want to thank the community for helping us for 31 years, and to all the people that have helped us at work to be where we are. Thank you, everybody.
Supervisor Christie.
I wasn't quite sure if Supervisor Kano said we're here to celebrate or salivate.
Thank you Supervisor Kano. We have one more presentation, and this is item number one on the addendum. This is presentation of a proclamation to Lori Kirsted Joseph, Assistant Vice President... I'm sorry, Assistant Vice Chancellor for Adult Basic Education for College and Career at Pima Community College, proclaiming the week of September 14 through September 2025 to be National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 4-0. And Lori, you have a lot of people from Pima here with us. You should all join us, and we are also pleased to have with us two of the members of the Pima Community College Governing Board. They made sure to not be three, because just like us, they didn't want to send a quorum notice, Kristen Randall and Teresa Riel. Nice to have you both here. You're not going to come up? You should. And after I read this, I'll turn it over to Lori, and you can introduce your company. Whereas, more than 43 million Americans cannot read or write at the most basic level, while 62.7 million lack basic math skills as well as the credentials and skills necessary to succeed in post-secondary education. And whereas, more than 900,000 Arizona adults 18 years or older need adult education to help them complete a high school equivalency diploma or to learn English. And whereas, 10.1% of the Pima County adults 25 years and older do not have a high school diploma. Whereas, the American... And whereas, the American Action Forum estimates that America is short, an estimated 7.5 million private sector workers across all skill levels. And whereas, adult education programs contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along the continuum in their educational journey to achieve basic skills and get prepared for careers in college. And whereas, adult education programs offer the low-cost, high-value programs that upgrade the skill set. National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, as a proud participant in the National Educate and Elevate Campaign, which helps our citizens learn about all of their adult education options to attain their professional and personal goals. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the week of September 14 through September 2025 to be National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week in Pima County, Arizona. Passed and adopted this 16th day of September, 2025. Ms. Kirsted. Ms. Kirsted Joseph.
Thank you so much Supervisor Scott. Thank you for, to the Board for recognizing National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, and thank you also to the Board for decades of support for adult ed in Pima County since our inception in 1969. The Board has been supportive of adult basic ed. I want to just take a moment and thank my, first of all, our student, actually, our student leader, Chrissy Gomez. Thank you so much, Student Ambassador, for being here today and representing the 4,500 others served by our program each year. Thank you to my colleagues Wendy Shader Black and Sarah Hagigi, two amazing leaders in
So that finishes up the proclamations. Thank everybody for being here.
our program, and to our Board members Kristen Randle and Teresa Real for being here with
Supervisor Cano will be bringing all of us to dinner at your restaurants, so.
us. We just really appreciate all of the support of this Board. It's essential, given that there are 120,000 adults in Pima County who need adult basic
Thank you. Thank you.
ed, either because they need to get their high school equivalency diploma or learn
All right. We're now moving to item number 11, which is call to the public, and I'm going to read
English before they can get on to college and career training that we know is essential for families sustaining careers.
the Board's rules and regulations, which were last revised in December of 2020.
So, thank you again for your support.
Our pleasure. Thank you. Is this a young lady in the audience snapping pictures? Citizens attending the meeting shall observe rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct.
Well, and huge thanks to Libby Howell, our amazing government relations person.
Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the Board may be removed by the Sergeant-at-Arms if directed by the Chair. Such person may be barred from further audience before the Board. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping effete, whistling yells, and similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the Chair, who, excuse me, may direct offenders from the hearing room. So we have a total of 10 speakers, which means that each speaker has three minutes. And our first speaker, and I'll call the two after our first speaker, and you can sit in the front while you're waiting for your turn. Our first speaker is Robert Royce, followed by Rai Whalen and Vivek Bharathan.
Chair Scott, for the record Supervisor Heinz has joined today's meeting.
All right. Good morning Supervisor Heinz.
I'm going to forego my regular presentation and present a little lecture from Thomas Jefferson on the subject of last week's news. Not too heavy, but very deep. All, of course, will arrange themselves under the will of the law and unite in common efforts for the common good. All too will bear in mind the sacred principle, that though the will of the majority is in all cases to prevail, for that will to be rightful, it must be reasonable. That the minority also possesses their equal rights, which equal laws must protect and to violate would be oppression. So let us then fellow citizens unite with one heart and one mind. Let us restore to social intercourse in harmony and affection without which liberty and even life itself are but dreary things. And let us reflect that having banished from our land that religious intolerance under which mankind has for so long bled and suffered, it is but a small thing if we tolerate a political intolerance as despotic, as wicked, and as capable of as bitter and bloody persecutions. During the throes and convulsions of the ancient world, he's referring to the Napoleonic Wars, during the agonizing spasms of infuriated men seeking through blood and slaughter his long-lost liberty, it was not wonderful that the agitation of the billows should reach even this distant and peaceful shore? That this should be felt more, that this should be felt and feared by some, more by some and less by others, and should divide, should divide opinions as to measures of safety. But every difference of opinion is not a difference of principle. We have called by different names rather than of the same principle. We are all Republicans. We are all Federalists. If there be any here among us who would wish to dissolve this union or change its Republican form, let them stand undisturbed as monuments to the decree that error of opinion may be tolerated where reason is left free to combat it.
Thank you, Mr. Royce. Mr. Whalen.
All right. Good morning. Thank you for your service and your dedication to doing what is right. I speak today as a concerned citizen and one who has proudly served this country as both a soldier and a civil servant, and one who takes great pride in the promise of America. It's my understanding that there's an increased interest in pursuing outside greater investment in our community. I want to share both optimism and caution as you consider the path forward. Today, we have more computing power in a single square foot of data center space than existed in all of the entirety of computers in 1990. Yet, the rise of this massive data-intensive, generative AI introduces a new and dramatic metabolic rift. Its impact is already visible on our environment, on the road I drive where I see the trees dying, on patterns of work, on global supply chains, on culture, and even on how we see and understand the world. Our information ecosystems are becoming saturated with torrents of low-value, machine-generated, content-digital residue that is rarely filtered out, and instead continually recycled as the raw material for subsequent generations of AI models. This cycle of consumption and excretion has real material consequences. This cannot be the cost of caring about innovation. We need more than quick fixes and patched glass. We need institutions that value the people and protect it, that recognize the weight and consequences of words and actions, and that honor community and neighborliness, thank you, not just individual gain. Thank you for your attention and your continued commitment to thoughtful stewardship of our shared future.
Thank you, sir. After Mr. Bharathan, I'm going to read our next five speakers after this gentleman because they are part of the group of students who join us, and they asked to be called up together. You each get three minutes, but if you want to come up together, you absolutely can. Dominique Zuniga, Natalie Lockwood, Kinley Fredman, Julian Grijalva, Jordan Stein. Sir.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. I missed the last meeting where many of my fellow No Desert Data Center Coalition members spoke. I was on vacation in Seattle and Pacific Northwest, which is beautiful. It was really nice to be somewhere where there's enough water in the air, where we didn't have to obsess about putting it into our bodies every five minutes and/or into data centers. So on that note, I am just going to read from the agreement real quick. Closing conditions. On or before the closing date, the following conditions must be met and shall be conditions precedent to closing. One of those conditions is, the property shall have been successfully annexed into the city of Tucson beyond all applicable appeal referendum periods. Was the property annexed? No, it was not annexed. The conditions were not met. This is not a deal. Don't close on the land sale. This, it's there, it's there on paper. Supervisor Christie, like at that meeting on June 17, you asked, you asked Beal, will annexation break the deal? You repeated to us in the audience, I was in the room, you said, we're going to do the sale if the city of Tucson doesn't annex, there will be no deal. Why are you going through with the deal? Chair Scott, in your interview with The More Perfect Union, you described representative democracy as, I think the question was, should there be a vote on this? And you said, not everything should appear on the ballot. That's why we have representatives to make decisions. In that case, you need to make informed decisions, by your own admission. By your own admission, you didn't have enough information that day. So why did you go ahead and vote? And why are you all digging your heels in now? Supervisor Heinz, dude, no one knows what you're doing. Like, you have such good stances on so many other things. Like, whose leadership are you following here? Why are you in such open defiance of your community and your constituents? We don't understand. Like, y'all have a chance now to make this right, and we really appreciate all of the measures you're taking to guard against this kind of extractive industry in the future. But if you don't make this right, how can we trust that you won't just go through similar processes even with those measures in place in the future? It's Constitution Week, and it is absolutely devastating and heartbreaking that we have a federal government that is trampling on our Constitution, trampling on our rights, deregulating everything, defunding us. And part of the reason y'all are going for these massive deals is that we are in a competition with other cash-strapped municipalities in a race to the bottom. That's what this is. That's what this deal represents. It's a race to the bottom, and we need better representation at the local level to defend against the federal government's dismantling of our rights.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Dominique Zuniga.
So my name is Dominique Zuniga. Good morning, Chair and members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity of letting us speak today. We want to begin by noting that this presentation reflects the findings from our community assessment project and does not directly reflect the views of Summit View Elementary School or the University of Arizona College of Nursing. So my name is Dominique. I'm here with my colleagues today, Natalie, Jordan, Kinley, and Julian, and we are senior nursing students at the U of A who are currently taking our community health course. And through this health course, we were assigned a census tract, so our census tract covered portions of Summit, Arizona, which is in District 2, just south of here. And our task was to go into the community and figure out what the most pressing health and social concerns are for them at the moment. So we did this through site visits, windshield surveys, and key informant interviews, and the one concern that consistently came up for this community was the condition of their unpaved roads and dirt roads. And while this may seem like primarily an infrastructure issue, what we learned from this assignment is that it's so much more than that, and it has had some very serious and significant consequences for the community related to health, education, and equity. So that's what we will be presenting today. Thank you. Hi, I'm Natalie Lockwood. One of the biggest challenges that Summit residents described is how the roads become nearly impassable after rainfall. During monsoon season, the dirt roads turn muddy, deeply rutted, and unsafe, which prevents the school buses from safely navigating certain neighborhoods. As a result, children sometimes are not able to get to school at all. This is more than an inconvenience for this community, it has serious repercussions and educational outcomes. According to U.S. News and World Report's education data on Summit View Elementary School, about 89% of their students are considered economically disadvantaged compared with the state average of about 60%. Their proficiency scores in math and reading are also significantly below the Arizona state average. Only about 10% of their students, excuse me, are scoring at or above the proficient math level, and only 19% of their students are scoring at or above the proficient reading level. When transportation barriers prevent students from attending school, these achievement gaps only worsen over time. What's most striking is that this is not a new issue for this community. In a 2013 community survey, profile survey from the University of Arizona's School of Public Health, residents identified the roads as being one of their biggest concerns. More than a decade later, the community members we spoke with told us that they are still struggling with the exact same issue. Some of the residents even are having to resort to using their own tractors to flatten the roads enough for them to go to school and work. In short, this is a longstanding unmet issue that directly impacts the children's education, safety, and overall quality of life for the people in the Summit community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Kinley Fredman. We are going to show you four different photos of the roads currently surrounding the Summit area, which demonstrate their very poor condition and why it is essential that improvements are made. Photo one is showing a photo of Old Vale Road. As you can see, it is not well-graded, making it difficult to navigate, especially during the rainy seasons. Driving on it can be rough and unsafe, and every year it gets worse as the rain continues to erode the soil. Photo two, you can see, this is part of Country Club Road. It is completely flooded. When the rain hits this road, it pools with water and becomes impassable. Families can't get to work, students can't get to school, school buses won't do pickups in this area, and emergency vehicles cannot get through. This poses serious safety risks and a major disruptions to education because of missed school days. Photo three, this is another photo of Old Vale Road, which shows trash and debris. During the rainy season, this trash can fill with water and create breeding grounds for pests like mosquitoes, which can lead to spread of disease. And lastly, photo four, this is a connection road between Old Vale Road and Country Club. It is just as rough and just as ignored. People here drive these roads every day. They have to risk damage to their cars every time they drive on these roads. The potholes pose an increased risk of car accidents if the driver loses condition from hitting one. The dust from these unmaintained roads also can lead to respiratory issues when it's blown up, like asthma, valley fever, and other allergies that can keep people in the community home from work and students home from school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julian Grijalva. This map I have here is sourced from a Pima maps resource here in our local community, and it highlights the Summit area central to our discussion. As illustrated here, the blue roads indicate roads that are not being maintained by Pima County, and the red lines indicate roads that are being maintained by Pima County. So as seen here, the majority of the roads in this region are currently not being maintained by Pima County, and this inadequate maintenance has a major impact on accessibility, particularly on main routes to local schools and businesses. Issues like flash flooding, debris, and potholes create serious hazards for the local community. We specifically recommend that Pima County prioritizes the maintenance of Old Vale Road Connection located up here, and stop here at the intersection of Country Club and Country Club, all the way down to East Summit Street. And we believe that the maintenance of this road can open up these routes for students to attend maybe school bus pickups and allows them easier access to the school down here. And restoring and maintaining these roads would enhance connectivity and provide safer, more reliable routes for students and members of the local community in their daily activities. Thank you.
So as nursing students, we are trained to look at health beyond the hospital walls. We need to consider the social and environmental factors that shape health outcomes. For Summit, the unpaved roads are more than an infrastructure issue, they're a health equity issue. We're here today to respectfully ask the Board of Supervisors to first acknowledge and prioritize road improvements in Summit, Arizona, as a matter of community well-being, specifically East Old Vale Connection Road, where it runs from South Old Nogales Highway to South Country Club Road, and then South Country Club Road down to East Summit Street. Second, to explore sustainable solutions, whether through increased county maintenance, partnerships, or pilot programs, to make sure children can get to school consistently and safely. And lastly, to engage with the community in the process, so the residents' voices can continue to So as seen here, the majority of the roads in this region are currently not being maintained by Pima County, and this inadequate maintenance has a major impact on accessibility, particularly on main routes to local schools and businesses. Issues like flash flooding, debris, and potholes create serious hazards for the local community. We specifically recommend that Pima County prioritizes the maintenance of Old Vale Road Connection located up here, and stop here at the intersection of Country Club and Country Club all the way down to East Summit Street. And we believe that the maintenance of this road can open up these routes for students to attend maybe school bus pickups and allows them easier access to the school down here. And restoring and maintaining these roads would enhance connectivity and provide safer, more reliable routes for students and members of the local community in their daily activities.
So as nursing students, we are trained to look at health beyond the hospital walls. We need to consider the social and environmental factors that shape health outcomes. For Summit, the unpaved roads are more than an infrastructure issue, they're a health equity issue. We're here today to respectfully ask the Board of Supervisors to first acknowledge and prioritize road improvements in Summit, Arizona, as a matter of community well-being, specifically East Old Vale Connection Road, where it runs from South Old Nagales Highway to South Country Club Road, and then South Country Club Road down to East Summit Street. Second, to explore sustainable solutions, whether through increased county maintenance, partnerships, or pilot programs, to make sure children can get to school consistently and safely. And lastly, to engage with the community in the process, so the residents' voices can continue to guide decision-making. Being in Summit and hearing directly from the families and seeing the conditions for ourselves has been a very powerful experience. We hope that this presentation helps bring renewed attention to an issue that has been affecting this community for over a decade. Please do not let another decade go by without addressing these concerns for the people of the Summit community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you all very much. We have, uh, three more speakers for Call to the Public, uh, in this order, Reed Sperling, Jason Pretty, and Phineas Anderson.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Reed Sperling, and I'm a Pima County resident. I'm not paid to be here. Thank you, Chair Scott and Board of Supervisors. Um, I want to specifically thank County Administrator Jan Lesher for opposing the Copper World mine. I'm really grateful that the county is standing with the Ton of Otsum Nation and with the advocates at Save the Scenic Santa Rita's. It is concerning to see the mine try to bypass the will of Pima County by working behind our backs with the Arizona State Land Department. The situation feels familiar. It feels familiar to those of us who have been advocating against Project Blue, an out-of-state company trying to sidestep locals to extract resources upstream of Tucson. I thank county leadership for advocating against Copper World, and I urge you all to do the same for Project Blue, recognizing that protecting our water, protecting our health, and keeping our energy bills low is good politics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sperling.
So, good morning, Chair Scott and, uh, senior members of the Board. Uh, so, I hate to rub feathers, but I come today because the regional county flood control district has been operating outside of legal authority and opposing this county to pretty large liability. First, their statute states for ARS 48306 that they allow only flood control, drainage, and repairing conservation. By contrast, ARS 11931 defines parks, trails, recreation as responsibility of the Board of Supervisors, carried out in Pima County through conservation lands and resources. So in plain terms, RSD has no authority for recreation. Second, RSD is misbranding parcels as open space. For example, in 2006, Eltira Road had a purchase that was properly posted as no trespassing. Betraker Road and others are branded open space with gates left open for OHV access and other potential legal activities, including on the right here to the board meeting. Uh, so obviously that is not stewardship, but the misuse of taxpayer funds. Third, worse, no studies or of any kind have been done, yet illegal actions by RSD have begun in earnest. Taxpayer funds dedicated, dedicated to other things such as repairing conservation, et cetera, are not being used, and it's negatively impacting residents who live near these areas. Fourth, there was an unsanctioned RSD meeting. Staff had told people to not hop gates, just go under cables. Minutes later, of course, after the meeting ended, trespassers were at a fence line again. They, Luke Hanselman was his name, had promised the water be closed to heel, which is part of the RSD's stated mission. Now, under Marissa Rice, who's the open land manager, she has mentioned that they are opening it up instead. The Attorney General's Office for Meeting Laws has been notified because of this unsanctioned meeting, and I have sent multiple cease-to-sus letters to RSD to this matter. Fifth, this goes far beyond my fence line. RSD manages over 90,000 acres of land in Pima County. If they can rebrand Plankawa Water today, they can also rebrand every other parcel tomorrow. This liability will, can become possibly countrywide, sorry, countywide. Uh, so I respectfully request that the Board, if they can, end RSD's misuse of open space mismanagement, halt all recreational projects under RSD's purview, transfer recreational authority to conservation land resources, which is the governing body, to handle these sort of things, and investigate RSD's misconduct if possible and illegal spending of taxpayer funds, which is negatively impacting taxpayers in the proximity to these areas. Uh, thank you for your time and attention to this matter, and I hope we can resolve this as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
One more thing, sorry, one more thing too is, I just do want to say that, you know, thank you to the, the actual county for purchasing this, this big parcel of land, because it is really damaged very, very badly, and it has been fenced off. So I do appreciate everybody's efforts, including Cameron Dominique, who is here today, the administrator, for helping to close, at least close off and start to remediate the issues. So, thank you. I apologize.
Hi, as Supervisor Scott, my name is Phineas Anderson. Uh, my brain in its stage of life has reached a point where it needs a lot of help, so I'm gonna read from my notes. This is my third time speaking to you since April 1st, when I presented my proclamation to you. I ask you to consider and approve my proclamation, which really represents many, many Pima County residents about Trump's executive overreach. It has been emailed to you, and I personally handed each of you that proclamation earlier this summer. I think that most of us are on the same page. Yet, what have you done to date, and I don't know what it might be, to confront President Trump in his efforts to move us from a democracy to an autocracy? Even in action as simple as passing the proclamation, which is now before city councils and county boards in 20 states? There are thousands of Pima County residents who have protested against Trump's overreach? Can you show some moral support by approving this proclamation? Again, I ask you to consider to pass this executive overreach, and I would hope you would do it by your next meeting. On a separate note, due to public and elected officials' resistance, President Trump did not go to Chicago. Instead, he's going to Memphis, Tennessee, a town like Tucson, Arizona. We very much could be next. Are you preparing to resist, to defend our city, and to put up a fight? It's gonna take some planning, and I assure you it's gonna come. And we in the public, as you know, I've organized the Tesla protests and No Kings and all the rest of it. There's gonna be another big protest coming soon. So you'll hear more about it, but it's gonna be along these lines about defending Tucson, and we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Anderson, being our final speaker, I'm going to close Call to the Public and ask my colleagues if they would like to request that an item be put on a future agenda, ask county staff to follow up with information on any item presented, or respond to a criticism. Supervisor Christie.
Yes, I just want to say, um, my wife graduated from the University of Arizona School of Nursing, and if she was here today, I don't think she would ever be more proud to be part of that institution after hearing your presentation. And whatever classes you are doing with this, uh, content, you deserve As. Along with that, because of their, uh, extensive investigation into this road situation, it sounds like to me that the people of Summit just want their roads fixed, just fix the roads. And at this point, I would like to see an engagement with the students who made the presentation with county staff to at least sit down and talk about what is happening and the, the actual impacts of the road situation, and see what issues might be addressed, what might be resolved, and maybe through their efforts, we can have some sort of a semblance of a fix to all this. And again, I thank all of you for your terrific presentation, and if you don't get an A, come back and tell us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Christie. Supervisor Heinz.
Uh, yes, thank you. And I was, actually, I would echo basically everything that my colleague from District 4 just said. I think that was a really impressive amount of research. I thank you for coming into my district and, uh, and presenting that to the Board. And I will just, again, to staff, say, let's, let's engage with these students, and let's work to make sure that we can, see what we can do in terms of the transportation, uh, situation. And absolutely right, um, transportation, there, there are direct, um, health equity and public health impacts as a result of a lack of adequate transportation, as, as we could see. Um, and, uh, I, I will say one thing about federal overreach. I think this Board is doing a pretty decent job of suing the federal government. Um, it's, you know, that, that's ongoing, but, um, when they, a lot of these executive orders, um, a lot of the new heads of agencies are reversing or just ignoring previous laws or previous policies done by the last administration or other administrations, and that impacts our ability to have emergency response, right, in Pima County, uh, or public health here. So we are, I think, doing a pretty decent job, um, at least on the legal stance. Our, our county attorney and the Board, uh, were working together to, to make that happen. So, but I did want to speak a little bit about, um, Project Blue. Uh, I, I think that there's been, uh, it's, this has been a really interesting process, and by that I mean a bit convoluted and a little frustrating, I think, for everybody. Uh, but I first found out about this project on May 22nd. That's when I had a, a briefing with the development team, with the Beal folks, and, um, I, like so many of you, my first question to them was, "Why Tucson? Like, why are you coming to Southern Arizona?" I didn't really understand it. Uh, and I don't mean that we aren't necessarily welcoming of a lot of different types of industries. I mean that it, I didn't understand the alignment, and I also didn't understand what exactly they were proposing. So I then spent dozens of hours with my team trying to figure out, "What is a cloud-based processing data center? How is that different from an AI one? How, uh, does proximity work in these kinds of situations? How, like, what, what is this thing?" And what I came to find out was that, while 10 years ago, these really didn't exist, now, um, this is becoming essential infrastructure for a lot of the industry in Southern Arizona. And the group that we're talking to, they're all based in San Francisco. These people are probably more liberal than, than, uh, this Board, frankly. But, um, that's, I'm serious. So, um, and, and not that that should mean anything, but that, uh, in talking with them, in listening to their commitment to making this fit in a way that respects our environmental stewardship goals and priorities, ones I share with many of you here, um, I, I was very impressed by that. So, um, basically, what it comes down to is not just 180 jobs that this project will eventually have when it's fully operational. It's never, for me, been about those jobs. And it's great that we'll have 3,000 construction jobs for two to three years, that's fine. But it's about truly so many other sectors, the tens of thousands of jobs all across Pima County, and ensuring that we're ready to fully participate in the new economy. And that means protecting, supporting, growing the number of high-paying, family-supporting jobs that we currently have in Pima County for, from, and, and we have examples of this, like, industries that will directly benefit from having proximity to this kind of processing power include, not limited to Caterpillar, Mitsubishi, IBM, Roche Diagnostics, um, and on. Raytheon, 15,000 jobs right there, Bombardier, Ascent Aviation, and, and there's, I could, I could, like, read a list for a few more minutes, but then I would get yelled at. Um, so, look, we need these, we need these institutions, these companies, to continue to thrive here and to expand here. And we also need that all to happen with, in a way that respects our environment. So, um, and we need, by the way, Amazon Web Services, we use that. Pima County uses Amazon Web Services. So does the City of Tucson, so does Pima College, uh, we just heard from, so does the University of Arizona, and on and on. So we have, J-TED, I think, as well. We have to participate in, in the new economy. We have to be, we have to be able to do this, and we have to be able to do it in a way that respects, uh, our environmental stewardship goals. And I believe that that is possible with this team. And I look forward to continuing to be a partner with this development team, uh, and not throw them aside, like I know the City of Tucson recently did, and that is their choice, that's fine. Um, but I think we have to participate, we have to participate for, on behalf of all of Southern Arizona, and if we are truly committed to the principles that this Board voted on, the Prosperity Initiative, like, an amazing, amazing document, right? That includes helping lower-income families gain a foothold and working to eliminate or decrease intergenerational poverty, and, and to build wealth for these folks, uh, for everybody here. So this is a type of infrastructure, uh, it is a new type of infrastructure, and one that will help us to grow these sectors in Southern Arizona, and I believe we can do that with this team and, and do so in a way that respects our resources and this amazing, amazing environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Heinz.
No! You're wrong!
Ma'am, please.
You're wrong!
Ma'am, please, you can't have those kind of outbursts in here. All right, uh, any other, Supervisor Allen?
Um, so first of all, decade, decades? Yeah, I think it is actually decade. Decades ago, um, I used to have a number of, uh, I worked in an organization that had, uh, human rights committees and trained human rights promoters in the Summit community. And we worked very closely, um, uh, there, and, and this, this would have been in the early 2000s. And at that point, folks struggled with, whenever there was a large rainstorm, people's homes would literally start to slide away, uh, because of the instability of the roads in the surrounding area, um, under the rains. And it was a, um, it was just a constant stressor. So all that is to say how much I appreciate the really well-done, thoughtful, structured presentation, and I, and I do indeed hope that, that we as the Board, um, can move forward with protecting the roads in Summit. It is so important, and it's a, it's a community that gets overlooked and under, um, they just overlooked, I think, too often. The, the other thing I just wanted to say, I think, to, to my colleagues' comments, is that I would love to hear the research around proximity.
Chair Scott. Mr., oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Jerkowitz.
Um, Project Blue is not on the agenda for discussion. The limitations under the statute are to responding to criticisms from the audience at Call to the Public. So if the Board wants to have a discussion about Project Blue in the future, that should be agendized for a future meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Jerkowitz. So, um, Supervisor Allen, if there were criticisms that were, um, uh, made during Call to the Public, uh, or if you want staff to follow up on something, or if you want something added to a future agenda, you can do that, but I think what Mr. Jerkowitz is saying is that we can't be engaging in dialogue with each other. Chair Scott. Hold on just one second, I just wanted to see what she wanted to say.
Oh, uh, well, in response to, I, I think, comments from the, from the audience, um, I, I think one of the things that we should look at, um, is, is the question of proximity, because the research that I think we have seen, uh, is that indeed proximity is not relevant, um, and that we are not hardwiring our businesses into any particular data centers. Um, and so it's, it is, uh, it's actually not relevant, um, to the siting of a center here. So anyway, I would love to see some additional research on that question as to whether or not it actually does foster and sustain, uh, local business.
Thank you, Supervisor Allen. Supervisor Kano.
Thank you, uh, Chair Scott. I want to ensure that there is equity from our legal counsel when it relates to the discussions happening on this dais. I believe that Supervisor Allen's comments were consistent with, uh, the latitude that we gave one colleague on this Board, and I expect better from our counsel moving forward. In response to a criticism, uh, of the public from this, uh, from Call to the Public related to Project Blue, I do believe that our county administrator needs to provide the public with greater assurances about our next steps. We discussed this at our last, uh, executive session item with a plan with our attorneys to follow through on, uh, our next steps and to provide a statement to, uh, the public. That has not yet been provided, and that has meant that our public has been left in the dark.
My patience is getting very limited as it relates to this, and I believe the public deserves greater transparency in this process. County taxpayers deserve to know that we are, uh, protecting them, defending our water, and securing our energy future from out-of-state corporations. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kano. Any other responses to Call to the Public? Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to the rest of our agenda. Let's go to items number 12 and 13, uh, and I will note that we are sitting as the Stadium District Board when considering these two items. Uh, I will move approval of both items 12 and 13.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen, discussion. All those in favor of items 12 and 13 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now let's go to, um... Now let's go to item number 14. This is approval of the consent calendar. I will move approval of the consent calendar as published.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Consent calendar is approved as submitted. We're now on to item 15, which is Board of Supervisors' representative updates on boards, committees, and commissions and any other municipalities. Any of my colleagues have anything to report for this item? Supervisor Heinz, and then Supervisor Allen.
Just a little one from the RTA world. The ballot measure may be three pieces instead of two. We're clarifying that with counsel, exactly how that's going to show up. But that's, that little, it's gonna, it's already referred to the ballot. It's just how it's going to show up is still being discussed a little bit.
Thank you, Supervisor Heinz. Supervisor Allen?
Yes, so the two boards that I sit on are the Arizona Border Counties Coalition, which meets quarterly, so we did not meet since the last meeting. However, the other board that I sit on is the Board of Health, which did meet and meets monthly. So a couple of key things that were discussed in that meeting. One, we got a report on heat-related deaths and illnesses, including hospital and urgent care visits due to heat. Notably, about 43% of heat-related deaths this year have occurred indoors, while 57% incurred outdoors. We also received an update on the tobacco-free policy goals, including the history of making select parks throughout the county and city tobacco-free. And then we received a report on federal and state budget as they pertain to health outcomes at the state and county level. HB 2175 requires that a person, not AI, must be involved in denying health insurance claims. And then obviously, the Medicaid cuts, along with other health and human services cuts at the federal level, are extremely alarming. And then the last, the last note is that the Board of Health approved developing a community health assessment of the public health impacts of data centers. And that that information can serve as a foundation for, for the county's due diligence process related to data centers or other large water or electric utility users moving forward.
Thank you, Supervisor Allen. Anybody else? Okay, let's go then to item number 16. Final plat with assurances. This is in District 4. Supervisor Christie.
I'll move the item.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that item is approved unanimously. Now let's go down to the two items under financial update. The first, I'm sorry, under Finance and Risk Management, the first one is a financial update. Administrator Lusher.
Thank you very much, Chair Scott. And we do have Director Cuaron is here today to chat about our financial forecast at this point in the year. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Cuaron.
Thank you, Ms. Lusher, Chair Scott, members of the board. We do have a brief presentation to follow the memo that was sent out last week as well. This, as the slides are being pulled up, just a couple of notes. These are all with respect to the 2425 numbers. They're very preliminary as we're working on closing our books for 25. So these are preliminary numbers as of earlier this month. So just keep that in mind as we work through. Next slide, please. So as we, as we look at an overview of where our financial position sits as of this month for 2425, we do have, our preliminary results were better than forecasted from the revenue perspective. We are exceeding our budgeted amounts from, from our adopted budget. And we have a slide that'll show that on the next slide. Our expenditure, hold on, go back, please. Thank you. Our expenditures are also trending lower than our budgeted amounts, so that results in a overall positive fund balance. We're anticipating that to increase over and above the reserve requirement of about 22, by about $22 million. We do have, as we noted in our period 10 forecast, that was done, I believe, in April. We had two departments that were projected to come in over budget of, by 500,000 or more. Public Defense Services was one of those. The overage that is anticipated, that was anticipated in period 10 is projected to come in slightly lower than that forecast. The period 10 forecast was 1.498 million. The numbers to date show that they're going to come in about 1.423 million. So realizing $75,000 have come off of those expenditures for PDS. The same news can be seen in the Sheriff's Department. The period 10 forecast was anticipated they were going to be over budget by about 4 million. As of September, that number is 2.7 million. Again, mostly due to the jail costs and increased food and utility costs out at the jail. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned on the previous slide, this is a chart demonstrating our financial results preliminarily for 2425. Our, a couple of things to highlight on this slide are the unaudited actual column. Again, these are preliminary through September. The additional fund balance, in the beginning fund balance row there of 132, that's really due to additional fund balance that was recognized after the budget was adopted last year, generating that variance of 6.7 million dollars. On the revenue side, you'll see we have 19.1 million that is over our anticipated or adopted budget. This is a combination of different revenue sources in the general fund, primarily buoyed by $11 million in state shared revenues. And we've monitored that since the beginning of my tenure with the county. We had a $3.3 million refund in Altechs, and we had additional $359,000 in pooled interest due to continued higher interest rates that weren't previously budgeted in the '25 budget. And then we had a $1.9 million increase in our, in our departmental revenues. It was demonstrated in the memo as well. We had transfers in, is coming in less than budget. That's really due to our indirect cost recovery from our grants. On the expenditure side, you'll see close to $5 million savings on the expenditure side. This is really due to county departments watching their budgets and, and coming in lower, lower than expected on the expenditure side. Transfers out, we're less than anticipated. This is really due to grant match. We just didn't get any, some of the grants that we, we thought we were going to get and didn't have to budget or expend the dollars on the match. So what that means is we have an ending fund balance of 126.7 million dollars anticipated for FY 2425. Next slide, please. So this slide demonstrates the preliminary general fund fund balance. You'll see the 126.7 there, less the, the reserve policy, which is, this is based, that was, that number is based on 17%. So the excess reserve is 22.4 million. Again, that goes back to the number that I mentioned at the top of the presentation. When we talk about our contingency amounts for affordable housing and then general fund, take those deductions out, and it leaves 19.1. Our period 10 forecast was 11.2. That was the amount that was used over and above to balance the FY 26 budget, meaning that the 7.9 million was, as we, as we talked about during the budget cycle and my forecasts from February, March, and April, we were monitoring the additional contingency that would be for grants. That 7.9 is that number. Again, that 7.9 is reflected in the 19.1, so it's not additional. We're just calling that out as we were tracking that per, I think, per board discussion during the budget cycle. Next slide, please. This, this slide here represents our financial forecast through August. The one highlight I want to point out here is through the first two periods of the month, it does appear that we're going to be receiving additional state shared revenues, close to $1 million. That's the one change that you'll see on the slide. Everything else is set to budget simply because of the, of the timing of the, you know, we're very early in the fiscal year, and there's not enough trend data to be able to predict where we might end. I do anticipate as we get into October, November, these numbers will change, as you've likely seen in the, in the time that I've been here. So in taking the forecasted amount in the column there, we're anticipating, based upon that additional $900,000 in state shared sales tax, that our ending fund balance would be about 100, a little over $100 million for the fiscal year. Next slide, please. Again, this is the fund balance reconciliation for '25, '26. We have that 101.3 million. That 92 million is the reserve policy. As you'll recall, this is the, this is the change that the Board of Supervisors adopted, moving from 17 to 15% during the FY 26 budget cycle. Meaning as of today, if all things held true, there would be an additional 9.3 million in fund balance. Again, caveat that this is very early in the fiscal year, and you will continue to receive updates from my office as, as we move forward in the fiscal year. I did want to point out, as we begin to look at our '26, '27 fund balance and with the, with the, you know, obviously, the next item on the agenda is, is the affirmation of the fund balance policy. Our 101 million is where we're at right now. If we moved back to 17% of expenditures, we would need to be at 103367. Again, that's based on our anticipated general fund audited expenditures, 17% of our general fund audited expenditures that we're anticipating to be in FY '25. So that leaves us short about $2 million. Again, very early numbers, very, very early in the fiscal year, and we do anticipate this potentially changing as we move forward and monitor both our revenues and our expenditures from the departments. Next slide, please. This slide demonstrates our general fund contingency budget. That was the $1 million that we had in the budget for contingency. We have, again, I'm going to bring this back to you each and every, every month that we do come, that we come before you to do a financial forecast. To date, we've spent $106,000 on HR pay strategy. This is really for HR positions that were hard to fill and in demand. And so $106,000 was used, leaving 800, approximately 894,000 in general fund contingency budget for the rest of the year. Mr. Chair, that concludes my prepared remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Questions or comments? Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you, Chair Scott, and thanks so much for the presentation and helping me get my W-2 the other day. So like, the grant, what's the grant status? Like, I know we have almost 8 million in anticipation of federal cuts impacting our grants that we're expecting. Is that, like, how are we doing? I know we aren't getting that update every month like we used to be, but what, what do we have outstanding? What do we think we're not going to get? Is there, maybe that's the wrong staff, I don't know. But like, where, kind of where are we in that terms of that?
I think Chair Scott and Supervisor Heinz, if I may, I think, to make sure that you have accuracy in what all the different grants are, I'd like to follow up and get you a report back on that. I know we have 13 million, for example, that remains unfunded and, from the federal government for the SSP, the, our shelter program. For that one grant alone, it has bounced, you know, up to closer to 60 in all grants. Some of those were ones we've not yet received, and then what the dollars are owed. But to make sure that there's specificity, we'd like to follow up. And Mr. Cuaron, if there's something you'd like to add today, otherwise we will follow up by the end of the week with a report. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Heinz. And just to add to that request, if we could also get a report, Mr. Jerkowitz, in conjunction with the county administrator from your office, because Ms. Conover had let the board know that because of the preliminary injunction that was issued with regard to the lawsuit where we joined with some other jurisdictions on funds affecting transportation and, and the community and workforce development, that some funds were freed up as a result of that preliminary injunction. So to add to Supervisor Heinz's request, if we could get a joint report from the two offices, that would be helpful.
And one quick second question.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. The reserve, the reserve balance, I remember we had this discussion a little bit ago in terms of the 17% number, and I thought we decided that 15% was great, like, for municipalities and such. Am I, am I misunderstanding that?
Well, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Scott, that's the next item as well. We have had the board policy at 17%. For this year's budget, the board asked that, that be waived and moved to 15%.
Okay.
The question had come up of whether you want to amend the policy formally or simply make adjustments as needed on an annual basis, and that policy review is the next item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Allen.
Thank you for the presentation, Director Kieran. I have a question on slide four. It's the general fund, fund balance reconciliation. There's a 1.4 million listed for affordable housing. Can you remind me what that, is there, yeah, what was that? It's not our 5 million.
No. Go ahead.
Chair Scott, Vice Chair Allen, my understanding is that this is, this is a request from the Board of Supervisors to put this additional 1.4 million in our contingency. It's outside of the 8.5 million that the board had designated in the '26 budget for affordable housing, five of which was from Pago and the other 3.3 that, that was authorized during, during the budget cycle. So this is not inclusive of those numbers. This is a separate and distinct ballot.
Administrator Lusher.
Thank you. And Chair Scott, Supervisor Allen, there were motions made by the board when we were adopting the budget in June, in May and June of last year, related to these. Why don't we update this report and get it to you and post for the public of exactly what were the motions and the purpose for the allocations of those dollars? In addition, just a reminder, what we had looked at at that time, there was a discussion by the board of whether or not we should increase an amount in the budget for additional funds for grants, that if we wanted to make grants. And we had, the board had indicated at that time a request that we, in effect, snap a line and that the amount that was designated in the budget for additional grants be increased by whatever dollars came in above in terms of additional revenues in excess of what we thought would be the fund balance. So that's why you're seeing the excess reserve, the 7.9 million, almost 8 million, to increase that bucket, based on that policy. The other two were motions made, and forgive me, I don't, I can't recall the day that that happened or what it was. Let's get back to you. And again, in memo format, and so that the public, as well as the board, has full access to that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Conno.
Thank you, Chair Scott, and Administrator Lusher and Director Cuaron appreciate the update. I, too, need a deeper dive on this grant's contingency, because I, in the first few weeks, had asked about it, and I'm still not sure I understand the math in all of this. It's spending capacity, but they're not real dollars, or they are real dollars. And so I look forward to getting more information on this. And at some point, this board had also discussed if there would be in each department and/or district a contingency fund, like the, the big one that we have. And I have yet to see a response on that. My next question also, and it could be Administrator Lusher, if you, if you want to do it in the form of a, of a memo, but I, I continue to hear from librarians and our library advocates about the need for long-term sustained funding in our branches. And I want to reiterate from this dais that the action taken by this board just a few weeks ago to strengthen and preserve our Pima Early Education Scholarships program was definitively not choosing one program over another, PEPS or our library districts. And we've got to dispel this myth, and we've got to provide a financial picture to this board of the resources and the efforts that it will take to ensure that our libraries are getting the same equitable investment. I believe at this current moment, we are exercising our authority to ensure that there was no disruption in a very quality, important program for our region. But to suggest, you know, that there is any effort to dismantle our libraries, I just, I fundamentally disagree with that perspective, because I know it to not be true, Chair Scott. The library branches are where Young and I spent a lot of time. And it was great to be at Valencia not too long ago with our librarians for Family Storytime, as I mentioned earlier. So I would like to see additional information on this particular item that we've got to have in partnership with the Library Commission, and I would like this in 90 days. Thank you.
Just, thank you, Supervisor Conno. Just to follow up on that, Administrator Lusher, when we discussed the item that Supervisor Conno was referring to, there was discussion about the fact that in the future, there might be a recommendation from the board, that there would be a recommendation for a reserve reserve policy for the library district, similar to what we have for the general fund, and that that might also be forthcoming with regard to the flood control district and the stadium district.
Yes. And Chair Scott, thank you, and Supervisor Conover, yes, we are, have been reviewing the fund balance policy regarding the library district. It is going through the library commission, the library advisory commission for their review and consideration as well. And yes, we remain committed, and I think there is no indication in any way that the libraries will be negatively impacted by peeps, that there is clearly a plan for both critical educational programs to be maintained through the library district. And if I may, we'll follow up with additional information, but yes, one of the issues that comes up regularly in the, we do have grants contingency in excess of $40 million. In the last couple of years, that had been 300 million. That is, and unfortunately for that line item, there is, there are no dollars associated with that. What we have done previously in the years where we had 300 million and now at 40 million, if we don't have a budget capacity that allows, that shows how much you can spend, you can't spend it. And so we have put in budget capacity so that if we were to successfully receive grants, again, a couple of years ago when we were getting 150, 200 million for public health purposes, having that capacity in the budget allowed us to actually spend the dollars when they were received. The 9 million, 8, 9 million is closer to what we've got in a contingency in grants in real cash that could be allocated by the board. But for clarity to the board and the public, we will certainly provide that in written format.
Chair Scott, I just want to thank Administrator Lusher for the clearest explanation of that. That made sense, not the five or six different emails I've gotten on this. And I look forward also to getting your communication, Administrator Lusher, that, that tells me that, that what we do have is, is a cushion to support additional opportunities to the tune of 9 million, not 40.
Chair Scott, Supervisor Conover, that's correct.
Thank you.
And my, my hesitancy is that is the additional fund balance. My hope is when we scrub it and your ends out, it could be slightly larger, but it's certainly not 40, it's closer to the nine. Thank you.
Supervisor Heinz.
On the subject of the library district, and I spoke with Mr. Holmes about this as well, I think yesterday, we, we are a little behind in terms of that, that the rate, the, the tax rate for the, the library district, and that is something that is supposed to be increased anytime we open a library by a cent or two, I can't remember exactly the ratio there. So that is something that I know that we, as a board, need to look at doing over the next two to three budget cycles. So just for any of the library staff or library board members who are listening, that is certainly my intent to make sure that, that that funding stream is proper and is reflective of the recent libraries that have been opened. So just so everyone hears that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Allen.
I, I did have one other question. On the, on the memo, under the section, I think it's on page, page three, under the section of general fund revenues, there's the, the chart. The very last item on the chart is finance mandated payments, and so it shows a, that there was not a budgeted, an unbudgeted, unbudgeted $3.3 million expenditure, revenue. And I'm, I'm just curious what that is, considering it wasn't budgeted and it's significant.
Yeah, Chair Scott, Vice Mayor Allen, that, that is, that represents the alt text refund that I, that I referenced. Because it's a refund, we don't typically budget for that. So that's where we, where we accounted for that.
And Chair Scott, if I may, just for clarity, Supervisor Allen, that's the years on a long-term care service system. The state does pay some to us, we pay some to them, and this was a refund of an overpayment. So thank you.
Anything else from board members? All right, Mr. Quarron, thank you very much. Let's move on to item number 18, affirmation of board policy, D 22.14, general fund fund balance. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved in second by Supervisor Allen, discussion. All those in favor of adopting item number 18 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 5-0. We have a time certain item at 11, but I have some items that I think we might be able to take care of. My colleagues want to consider those. At this point, I would move items 19, 20, 24, 26, and 27.
Mr. Chair, I would concur, but I do have a question on item 19.
We, you can, but you're, you're okay with considering them together?
All right. Could you repeat them?
Yes, sir. 19, 20, 24, 26, and 27.
Thank you.
And so you'll second that Supervisor?
I will.
Thank you. And you had a question about item number 19.
Yes, this is an adoption of personnel policy, settlement of employee claims. My question is, is this policy being created to settle any employee claims that might have been brought against Pima County during the pandemic?
Administrator Lusher.
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, no, it is not. It does not relate to any of those. What we have realized, this would also affect only any employee settlement or request for a claim from this point forward, so it would not impact any of those going back. What we have, I'll just, what we've recognized is that there have been times when settlement of what might be considered a minor difference of opinion between an employee and a supervisor, were they owed days, some small financial amount, was left solely to the director to make those decisions and determinations. And we felt that it was appropriate to have a policy by which assistance could be given to the director, the supervisor in evaluating what an appropriate, appropriate response to the claim might be and that the employee also understood the process by, by which this would be consistently evaluated across the county.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Supervisor Allen.
So I, I was going to ask if this is a new policy or just an update? So there was nothing before about the settlement. And then is there, I'm curious about the, I just noticed that there wasn't a timeline included in it, and so that people can sort of know the length at which, and to kind of urge along the, the settlement of a settlement? And if that is something that was desired to include or intentionally not included?
Administrator.
Chair Scott, Supervisor Allen, many, I think it's, can just designed to be consistent with other policies. If it's the direction started of the board to include timeframes with that, we don't always have those specific, some take longer than others, but perhaps if we could move forward the adoption, we could come back with a modified amendment, with amendments that to include those snapshots as well of the timeframe.
I think I would just, I'm not, I don't want to require it in there, but just as if it had not been contemplated, to have something to, to ensure that the settlement process is expeditions so that the employee, but, but not that there needs to be a hard and fast.
And Chair Scott, Supervisor Allen, Vice Chair Allen, one of the things that we've been working towards with all the departments is process improvement on many of these types of activities. We're looking to establish a way by which, on the intranet, as an example, any employee could look at what they think is a process, be it creating a new PC and any kind of financial adjustment, so that anyone can look at it and see what the steps are, where things go through, sometimes what is a mystery. And each step will be included with a best estimate of timeframe, so that employees can look at something like this and know where it is and what we think is our, the normal or what we expect of our staff in terms of hitting timelines on that. So this is one of the items that we can run through, that process improvement, to make sure we're identifying timeframes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on these five items? All those in favor of adopting 19, 20, 24, 26, and 27 indicate by saying aye.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I do have one question I did, I did notice.
Go ahead, sir.
On item 20, these are 24-hour open ballot drop-off boxes. If they're open 24 hours, how are they being monitored? And what kind of surveillance is being utilized during those 24 hours?
Administrator Lusher, if we could ask you to help facilitate a response to Supervisor Christie's questions from the recorder's office, that would be appreciated.
Happy to, and I'll simply say Chair Scott and Supervisor Christie, at this point, there is video cameras that I know monitor all those locations, so at least give you a minor assurance on that until we can get report from Recorder Cuzares Kelly. Thank you.
All right. All in favor of those five items indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items are approved 5-0. Would also like to consider in block 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32. Moved, seconded by Supervisor Christie. Any discussion on those five items?
Mr. Chair, just a point of reference, I'd be willing to continue on with packaging.
I'm just, thank you, I'm just trying to do them in small blocks because I know that that's a lot of scratching people have to do, so I'm doing them in groups of five.
And they are 28, 29, 30.
31 and 32.
Second.
Any discussion? Supervisor Allen.
This actually isn't on any of the particular items, but I do just want to note how much I appreciate the, the new agenda, the inclusion of where the headquarters are of the company that we are contracting with. And I think it helps illuminate the, you know, where we are, where we're, where we're spending our money. And yeah, just really appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor. All those in favor of adopting those five items indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, would move adoption of 33, 34, 35, 36, and 37.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Those, that's 33, 34, 35, 36, and 37?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm trying to do them in groups of five. So with that in mind, I would now move 38, 39, 40, and 40 as noted, there was a correction to the rapid response amount that Ms. Manrique has noted in the agenda adjustments. So it's 38, 39, 40, 41, and 42.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Probably be best to take those separately.
Okay, so.
I would like to motion to approve all of those items that you just mentioned, 38 and 39, 40, 41, and 42.
Is there, Supervisor Christie, is there one of those that you do not want to?
38 and 39.
Okay, so let's do, let's do this. Let's, let's approve, let's move 40, 41, and 42. Is that all right with you Supervisor, if I take, Supervisor Christie, if I take 38 and 39 out?
And 42.
Okay, all right. So, but you.
Just out of curiosity, Chair Scott, with a point of order, when I issue a motion, can we see if the parliamentarian, can you let us know if that is prevailing or not?
So I, I made the motion. Supervisor Christie was going to, asked if we could take some of them out, but you're moving all five. I'm just trying to do something where if there are members who want to support an item but don't want to support others, or that, if we can find some way of doing that. So.
Chair Scott.
Yes.
Just for clarity, you made a motion, but there was no second for the motion. So, and then Supervisor Conover made a motion, but there was no second for that, so we actually do not have a motion right now.
Chair Scott, would you like to second? Do you want to second or you want to withdraw and start all over?
Yeah, well, I will start all over.
Okay.
And what I will do is move 38, 39, and 42.
Second.
Any discussion on those three items? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Now let's go to 43, 44, 45, and 46.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. Discussion on those four items. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's go back to item number 40. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen, discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then 41, I'll move that item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen, discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And I apologize, Supervisor Christie, I thought it was 40 and 41 that you were not wanting to support. So that's why I, that's why I changed the, the original motion.
I was in favor of 40.
Okay.
I was in favor of 41.
Okay, my apologies. I, I, I thought it was 40 and 41 that you did not want to support. But at, at any rate, we've got those all taken care of. All right, and let's see. Let's go ahead, because it's 10:58, let's go ahead and do our time certain items for 11 o'clock. And that time certain item is item number 25, under detainee and crisis systems, NAFCARE Incorporated Amendment Number Two, to provide for correctional health services, extend the contract term to September 30 of 2027, amend contractual language and scope of services, general fund contract amount of $53,763,925.33. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Administrator Lusher, any introductory remarks before I get questions from board members?
Thank you. Chair Scott, and NAFC, this is the two-year extension for NAFCARE. We do point out that while it is two years, there is an ability for the Board of Supervisors to move out, to exit the contract with 120-day notice. The board has directed and staff is working on an analysis of how we can take the steps necessary to move the operation of the health and behavioral health care in the jail back to county functions. It was there until about 20, 25 years ago. As the Department of Institutional Health, it has subsequently been contracted with outside providers since that time. I think we're on the fourth or fifth contractor at this point. But again, this is simply additional dollars required to fund the program for the next two years, and a reminder that we continue to look at internal operations. We do have staff here from Detainee and Crisis Services who can answer any questions you might have about the contract. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lusher. Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you, Chair. And I, I think, I publicly talked about this a lot. I, I don't believe that we should have private outsourced health care for, for our inmates. I think that it's really important that we bring this in-house, and it's something that I've, I think, we've talked about on this board for a couple of years now. And my team and I had a very productive meeting with Paula Perira, as well as the, the head of risk management, as well as the head of the carceral health system for Maricopa County, where they have, they have maintained in-house control. These are all Maricopa County employees that provide for behavioral health as well as regular health services in the Maricopa County Jail. And I think that, I think that we can get this done, hopefully in 12 months, not in 24. And I, I was going to actually propose that we decrease the, the length of term of the contract, but given that section seven point, I think two, given the, in section seven, it's pretty clear that we can move forward with bringing this in-house as it should be, and, and any time in this 24-month period of time, I think I would be supportive of, of this contract as it's written, and also would ask that staff continue to move aggressively toward bringing this in-house so that we can, really, I think it's going to solve some problems. And frankly, when there's no profit motive involved, which of course there necessarily is for an outside company, that, that's where we should be. Because if we need to, if we're, if we are not making our quotas, don't have enough behavioral health nurses or NPs or whatever, then we can have a one-time bonus because we don't need to worry about our profit margin, and that's exactly the way this should be.
Thank you. Supervisor Allen.
Thank you. I, I, I think like Supervisor Heinz strongly believes that the, that the, there should not be a profit motive tied to providing health care to folks that are in, within the Pima County jail, and, and also within the, within the contract really do encourage us to move as. And, and also within the, within the contract really do encourage us to move as, as quickly, while also thoroughly along kind of the timeline that had been laid out to, to, to advance that transition from private health care to bringing it back in-house. I, I am interested in knowing kind of where we are in that timeline. There were a few of the steps that, that were outlined, that those deadlines have passed. So I wanted to check and see if, and where we're at on those.
Administrator Lesher.
Thank you very much. I'm going to turn to staff. Mr. Page is here today to respond to those questions, I believe. Thank you, sir.
Thank you Supervisor Scott, and I should say Chair Scott, Supervisor Allen. We had our first meeting with our kind of core department leadership on this issue on September 4th. At that meeting, first and foremost, we realized the size of this task to the county. We had initially wanted to do quarterly meetings. It was clear to us that we need to do monthly, so we will be meeting monthly on this. Next meeting will be October 2nd. It was also clear to us that the first thing that we really need to figure out so that we can plan going forward is the, the question of liability. The county is currently self-insured, but our insurance currently does not cover correctional medicine. And so the risk management folks are already moving that forward as Supervisor Heinz had mentioned in the call facilitated with Maricopa County. We've connected with their risk folks as well so that we can really have a handle on that, as that will kind of help guide our next steps and recommendations as we bring those back to this board. So we will be meeting monthly on this, and as, as requested, can provide updates. But we hear you loud and clear about the timelines.
I'm also curious whether there are, if, is, is there anything new and different in this contract from the previous contract that would decrease the likelihood or increase the protection of life? Our jail had one of the highest per capita death rates of jails in the United States just a couple of years ago. And so in thinking about that, is there anything different? It's just restating my question, is there anything different in our contract now that continues? And I know that those numbers have dropped, but is there anything in the contract that can, that identifies what it is that has changed? And are we contractually embedding those practices moving forward over the next two
Let me speak to that Supervisor Allen, members of the board. So I would say specifically to that question, no, there isn't. However, our practices have led to decreases in deaths and increase safety. That's an operational decision that we make with custody. Again, how do we make people safer? And I can give you a really good example. In 2023, when our community and many communities around the country were hit with fentanyl and that epidemic, we saw a spike in the jail, just as everybody in the community has. What we did was alter our intake process and assumption that people are coming in likely under the influence of this substance. And so in the last two years, we have prevented suicides, any successful suicides in our jail, and we haven't had any overdoses leading to death. These are two of the primary ways of preventable death in a jail-based environment and have been our absolute focus. And so in the last two years, we have made significant strides in that. We have no plans to change that. I mean, we are all healthcare professionals and do not want to see people harmed as they go into the jail. And so as far as them being explicit to the contract and maybe penalties, we haven't added those. I would say though, that the incentive and, and structure around staffing, I think, has, has had a positive impact. One of the biggest things that faces a healthcare environment, especially in this, is, is staffing shortfalls. It's a, it's a problem that we see everywhere. When we were talking to Maricopa County, I believe they were, they were at a rate of about 24%. They've got it down to 16, which is really good. I could tell you our vacancy rate at our juvenile facility, nine and a half, I want to, 11%. At our adult facility, it's nine and a half. So we've done a pretty decent job with, with our current structure of trying to keep that number down. And as we talk about bringing these services in-house, we, we really want to make sure that we do that without any lapses or, or taking any steps back in care. Two things are kind of true here. We've, we've gotten a lot better with our, with our correctional health practices, but we certainly have a long way to go. And again, we, we wanted to make that clear in the memo in this contract. As was mentioned, we, in, in term seven, we have a very clear pathway to bringing all or part of services in-house. As we talked to other communities, they typically rely on, that have done this, are doing a hybrid-type model, which is exactly what Maricopa County is doing. About 20 to 30% of their staff are contracted out. And so as we, we explore this, we know that we have a way to, to exit part or whole of this contract. NAF Care has agreed that they would participate in any transition that would not be disruptive. And within 100, if we give that 120-day notice, they have agreed to, within 30 days, develop a plan that we would have. So within 90 days of that exit, we would have that, that fully laid out in front of us for all or part of it. So we have felt like we have put safeguards in this contract, and listening to the will of the board really understand that we need to put forward policy recommendations that you guys can consider on, on this issue. So, thank you.
Supervisor Allen, please continue.
And I think my last question is, is just understanding a little bit, if, if there is a role for our, our health department in, in the health provision and the medical care? Or just sort of structurally, maybe the, the end goal is?
Yeah, so Supervisor Allen, members of the board, what I will say there is that becomes a little challenging with an accreditation, right? Because they are, they, in, in a in-house model, that could potentially be an option, but as it currently states, the, the liability kind of shield and how the contract is written is that NAF Care staff are the ones, the contractors, providing that medical care. Again, as we are certainly exploring the insurer, the insurance aspect, that question will come up. Because again, what we're essentially asking is, how do county staff do this? And how do we move the internal infrastructure to do that? And as we've talked to many communities, not just Maricopa County, there are, you know, each, each community that does this does it uniquely. And so I think some communities, when they move it in-house, correctional health moves under the purview of the sheriff. We've seen it under a public health entity. Our, our goal is to again, get recommendations in front of you that are specific to this community and, and really what's feasible. So to your point, everything is, is kind of going to be on the, on, for discussion. Thank you.
Chair Scott. Hold on just one second because I haven't called on Supervisor Condo yet.
Thank you Chair Scott. Administrator Lesher, I, you know, I'm curious, has this board indicated that we would be headed toward taking these, taking these duties in-house at this point?
Chair Scott, Supervisor Condo, the board, majority of the board asked for a plan for the board to consider as an option, should they wish to take this in-house. There's not been a specific direction to do so, but there has been specific direction to develop a plan for review by the board to consider that option.
Thank you Chair Scott and Administrator Lesher. The reason why I mention it is this doesn't tell me we're in exploration mode at this point, the conversation we've heard today. This tells me that we are moving forward toward perhaps a one-year or 90-days' notice. So I, I want to make sure that we reset the narrative that this board has not exercised that option yet as a whole. And I, of course, I'm going to be looking for ways to always support bringing resources to our county employees. I do think we have to look inward, but this is a policy decision at this point, and I'm worried a bit about the conversation I've heard, especially as it relates to a contract, right? If I was NAF Care and the other devil's advocate in here, I'd kind of just be saying what is happening. And I think it's good practice for us to put as standalone items for the board's consideration, a straight up or down bow on whether we should be proceeding in this manner before we have staff do all of this incredible work and research that ultimately has a lot of implications. And I think it's just a, it's a good reminder of, of this being a board decision and not a staff decision.
Absolutely. Thanks, Senator.
Thank you Supervisor Christie, and then I'm going to come back to Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you. I'm just trying to jog my memory here. I seem to recall that it was in-house in roughly 20, 25 years ago, and your predecessor, Mr. Huckleberry, made the decision, or the board with his, his backing, made the decision to contract it out. What was the reason, the reasoning? Do you recall that? Or?
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, I believe it had to do with finances. I was not here at the time. I'm happy to look into that. As I mentioned, it was about 25 years ago. We've gone through several operators since that time. So I'm, let me.
More than likely it dealt with, with cost savings.
I believe that to be true.
Thank you.
Supervisor Heinz.
And if I may, Chair Scott, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Forgive me, but at that, there was a time when Pima County ran the hospital. Pima County owned a long-term care facility. Pima County owned and operated a medical plan, and we operated all the institutional health services in-house. There was this move, I think this became part of that entire package of moving, again, we divested from the hospital, contract with an individual operator, we sold the, the long-term care facility, we shut down the medical plan. So this was just an element of all of that.
Go ahead Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you. And actually, just to springboard off of that, if we could hear from staff, how much, I was surprised, the per-year cost of this contract with NAF Care is 20-something percent higher than the last contract we signed. Is that not right? What is that in millions of dollars per year, if you have that?
Administrator Lesher.
I can go on to another question while you figure it out if you want.
Looking at the documents you have in front of you.
But to my colleague from District Four, to his point, it may have been 20-something years ago, a question of finances, but given these numbers and how much this is ballooning just in a one or two years, I don't, it seems to me like now the opposite might be true. We, we, you know, we'll, we'll see. But if you have, if you don't have it, that's fine, but it is. It's a 20-plus percent increase per year for, for what we're having to pay now because it was much less before. I, I do not want the carceral health to be in the purview of the sheriff. I would like that to go on record right this very moment. Given what he does with the rest of the budget, I can't imagine how expensive that would be. And I, I really want, and not so much Dr. Cullen and Dr. Sol and the people in the health department, like seeing, you know, going into the, doing the health care, but in this, in the, in the monthly meetings that you were just talking about, I would like to, I just want to make sure that we have all of the, the best minds and folks at the table. And I think that it would be a disservice to the public and to the carceral health system if we did not have, it doesn't have to be Dr. Cullen, because I can't speak for her time, but like somebody from the public health department, Dr. Cullen or one of her designees, should be at that meeting when you're having those monthly meetings as you contemplate this and figure out how best to do this and how to do it in the safest way possible.
And thank you. And Chair Scott and Supervisor Heinz, the increase, what we're, just, I'm not sure this is exactly the question asked, but the amount of the contract under item three, the maximum amount is to be, for the next year is $53,763,000. It's, it is, it's a healthy contract. And yes, the health department is part of the team that is reviewing the transition.
Any other questions or comments from board members? If not, I had one that I, I think would be helpful in terms of the board having full knowledge of what's moving forward. Ms. Lesher, I cannot remember when the board got the memo from Ms. Pereira with a cover memo from you on how, what the process would be, but it might have been prior to, did you, okay, thank you Supervisor. All right. I just wanted to be sure that we all had the most current information.
Well, Chair Scott, if, if we can engage in this, that was discussing the possibility of us going in that direction.
Exactly, yes, yes, that's right.
And that, and this, this discussion today tells me that we are doing it in two years. And I agree with you. We have not said that yet.
That's right.
And so before we do that, can we talk to the board a little bit more about what that means?
No, Supervisor, thank you. Because no, we did not make that decision. We asked for a, a, a process by which that could be, could be considered to be laid out for us, and Ms. Pereira said it would take no less than two years. So to follow up on, on your point, I wanted to ask Administrator Lesher or whoever else wanted to respond, beyond the issues of accreditation and liability, what are the chief concerns that we are taking into account as we're considering what recommendations we might make to the board?
Chair Scott, it's quite a, a metrics, but we are looking at not only simply the provision of quality care. What are the physicians? What's the staffing need? The HR component, if you will, is a significant element to this in that there's sometimes if, think about if we have employees go homesick, we can modify programs, close early, do something in that nature. That didn't happen at the jail. So we've been looking at what the HR system would look like to make sure that we can blend contract employees, county employees, what that might look like. So the HR piece is an element of it. The liability piece is an element, the quality of care, behavioral and medical is a component. There's, Mr. Page, who else is part of the committee?
Yeah, I could tell you procurement, I mean, right? Just bringing in supplies in a timely manner. Staffing is a huge component. I mean, we have a shortage of medical professionals. Glad to see some, some coming up today. Excellent presentation, by the way. But it's, it's, it's a competition for these employees, right? And we are, I mean, we have a lot of premier healthcare organizations here. And again, to get people to come and work in a jail or a prison environment, it requires sometimes a staffing model that is not usually inherent to the county, right? When we were talking to Maricopa County, they were saying, you know, we have to give money for continuing education. We were doing, you know, bonuses or onboarding. They were doing, you know, day-on signing, like just getting really creative with bringing people on board. But the issue that we see with staffing, that even if people come over, like one-to-one, right? They're currently in a system that doesn't pay into, into ASRS. So even getting that employee to come, come over at the same take-home, you're going to have to think about how you, how you structure that, right? There's issues with the county attorney's office. What we heard from Maricopa County is 98% of their medical malpractice claims are coming through correctional medicine. When we talk to them about that, they contract out for that service. They don't hire those internals. So if you, if you really look at this, even to IT, you know, all the devices are managed by NAF Care. There's a lot of devices in there that are required to, to help provision health care. So as we have started to explore this on a direction of the county administrator back in April, we have, we have started to see that this is truly a county lift, if, if we're going to do this. And, and so the, the, the ask to us was, as Supervisor Condo said, was to put together a kind of roadmap, a, what would a plan for this look like for, for the board's consideration? And we are moving that forward.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Christie?
Yes, thank you Chair. You kind of piqued my interest when you talked about claims against, as far as the health care in the, in the correction system. Who is responsible to address those and maybe ultimately pay for them? The county or, or the contractor?
In the current structure, the contractor.
So if we didn't have the contractor, Pima County would be responsible and have to self-pay it?
That is my understanding Supervisor Christie.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay. And then I, I can't remember if this was touched on before, so I apologize if I'm asking something that any of you already addressed, but when do we expect? Because what we're voting on today is approving an extension of the current contract for two years. So when do we expect to get a recommendation on what we might do moving forward? Whether we go in-house or whether we have another item like today's? Is there a timeline for that?
There is Chair Scott. I'm trying to see the memo. We gave them a year to begin to look at the evaluation, assuming that with the current contract, should the board make a determination, that gave us safely a year to study and a year to implement.
Thank you. You jogged my memory as well. That, that was noted in there. Anything else? All right. All those in favor of adopting item number 25 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 5-0. Okay, now we're going to go back to item number 21. This is Lariat Village Prop Co. Limited Partners to provide an affordable housing gap funding agreement and affordable housing restricted. and Affordable Housing Restrictive Covenant for the Lariot Village Housing Project. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Discussion. All those in favor of Item 21 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie opposed. Let's go to Item Number 22. Habitat for Humanity Tucson to provide an Affordable Housing Gap Funding Agreement and Affordable Housing Restrictive Covenant for the Mars Landing Home Ownership Project. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0. Item Number 23. Pima County Community Land Trust to provide an Affordable Housing Gap Funding Agreement and Affordable Housing Restrictive Covenant for the Badio Anita Casitas. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor, was that Kano? Supervisor Kano? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie opposed. Okay. You can flip all the way to page 9 with the hearings, because we've covered everything beforehand, even though I apparently confused everybody with the last few items. Sorry to, especially Supervisors Kano and Christie. Let's go down to the hearings for liquor licenses. And just to inform the public and the media, when we consider these, these are recommendations that we're making to the state. It's the state liquor board that has the final say, but they do ask for recommendations from local governments. Is that correct, Ms. Manriquez?
Chair Scott, that is correct.
Okay. So unless there's anybody present to speak to any of these items, I'll move to close all five of the hearings dealing with liquor licenses and recommend approval. That'd be Items 47 to 51.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Those items are approved and are moving forward to the state. Let's go now to Item Number 53. This is a rezoning resolution. It is in District 2. Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you. I move to close a public hearing and that we adopt Resolution 2025-39, what's that, P24CA00001.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. That takes care of the agenda.
Chair Scott.
Supervisor Kano.
Thank you Chair Scott.
Did we do 52?
Pardon me? Oh, yes, it was, yes, it was continued, sir.
Thank you.
You bet. Supervisor Kano.
Thank you Chair Scott. Over this last weekend, Pima County lost an extraordinary nurse practitioner in our Health Department, Neil Bonsak. Neil, in the words of Dr. Cullen, "was an extraordinary clinician with a compassionate heart and a keen sense of social justice." She said, "His abrupt departure from our family will leave a profound gap in our spirits as well as our community. As we look to the future, we hope to continue following Neil's example to serve those most in need. But most importantly, we know that he would want us to laugh when things get tough and to always know that none of us are alone on the journey through life." I had the pleasure, Chair Scott, of meeting Neil on my visit to the Teresa Lee Clinic just two weeks ago. And it is devastating when any member of our team loses their life. And I want to thank Dr. Cullen for alerting the District 5 office in addition to offering our best wishes to the incredible staff in our Health Departments. Know that support is there in these next few days as we heal with this loss. And I just wanted to extend from this dais the board's sympathies to Mr. Bonsak's family and his fellow colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Kano. Appreciate that greatly. There are some items on the addendum that I'd like us to address before we take up the two executive session items, which are Items 2 and 3. First one is item, and I'll tell you in a second why I don't want to do them all together. First one is Item Number 4, which is Meet and Confir Memorandum of Understanding. Staff is recommending approval to extend the memorandum through March 31st. And that is agreed to by our partners in AFSMI. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Heinz. All those, I'm sorry, discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That's approved 5-0. Item Number 5 is approval of three appointments to the Library Advisory Board, two of them in District 3 and one of them in District 1. And I just wanted to say to my colleagues, the reason that we have to fill this vacancy in District 1 is because Mr. Lukamsky, who we had only recently appointed as one of our two members to the Library Advisory Board, unexpectedly and suddenly passed away. And very sad for his loss. And we'll be going to his memorial service at the beginning of next month, but just wanted to share that with all of you. So I'll move Item Number 5, which are those three appointments to the Library Advisory Board. Moved and seconded by Supervisor Heinz. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then Item Number 6 is appointment of a member to the Regional Wastewater Reclamation Advisory Committee. That's in District 5. Did you want to make that motion Supervisor Kano?
Thank you Chair Scott. So moved.
Okay. Second. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of adopting Item Number 6 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We had set a time certain for going into executive session, but we're ahead of schedule. I don't know when that's ever happened.
All the time.
But I had a request from one of our colleagues to divide the question on going into executive session. So we're going to continue, we're going to consider both of these separately. All those in favor of going into executive session for Addendum Item Number 2 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. I was doing so well. I will make a motion to go into executive session to discuss Item Number 2.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Heinz. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0. I will also move to go into executive session to discuss Item Number 3. Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry Supervisor Heinz. Yes, I'm rushing through this. Discussion.
No, I just wanted to go on record saying I'm not in favor of expending tax dollars to go to outside counsel. And the language of this contract we're looking at is pretty clear. So I will be voting against going into executive session on this topic.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor. Any further discussion on the motion to go into executive session to discuss Item Number 3, Addendum Item Number 3? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Item passes 3 to 2 with Supervisors Christie and Heinz opposed. I should point out for the media and the public, although Supervisor Christie and Heinz voted to oppose going into executive session, they can certainly still participate in executive session. All right. So the board is in executive session until the sound of the gavel. And just for the members of the media and Mr. Higera, the only reason that we will come back, the only reason that we will come back is to adjourn the meeting. All right.
Okay, we are back in session and the two executive session addendum items were number three and number four. No, I'm sorry, number two and number three and those were for information only. There being no further business before the board, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.[1803.32][1803.32](Beep)